Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the City of Fort. City of Fort Meade's special meeting called Wednesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty-five at six P. M. Actually, it is six oh-two. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order with the roll call led by the city clerk.
Vice Mayor Shell.
Present.
Commissioner McCutcheon.
Present.
Mayor Barion.
Present.
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Watt.
Here. Okay, at this time, we will have, uh, we're gonna ask if Commissioner McCutcheon would do our invocation, and then we will, uh, proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone could stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you humbly and gracious for all the things that you have done in our lives. We come to take care of the matters of the City of Fort Meade. We pray that all things that are done and said will be done so in decency and order, and we pray that you would grant us wisdom, give us the knowledge and the understanding to make decisions to improve our city on behalf of our citizens. It's in your name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, by the United States of America, and to the Republic for which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would like to thank Commissioner McCutcheon for that invocation. And in about thirty seconds, we're gonna open up the public forum. Each person addressing the commission shall sign in with, uh, the city clerk no later than six oh-five. So if anybody wish to address the commission, uh, there's a sign-in on the table. Person shall step up to the microphone, shall give his or her name and address in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further, time is granted by the commission, shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks shall be addressed to the commission as a body and not to any member thereof. No person other than the members of the commission having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through the members of the commission. It is six oh-five, and if we have anybody that wish to address the commission.
Mr.
Who do we have?
We have S. Robbie.
If you could come on up to the podium, Mr. Robbie. Do we have anyone else?
Yes, sir.
All right, so public forum is closed at this time, if there is no one else. All right, so new business, uh, E zero-one Resolution twenty twenty-five dash ninety-one.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Meade, Florida, approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Fort Meade and the Griffin Group for State Governmental Relations Consulting and Lobbying Services, providing for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars annually, providing for term, providing for implementation, providing for an effective date.
All right, we have the Assistant City Manager, Amy Wheeler.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, this agreement, as outlined, provides the city with a dedicated, experienced advocate in Tallahassee, one who understands not only the legislative process, but our city's unique priorities, future plans, and operational needs. The Griffin Group has previously demonstrated a strong grasp of Fort Meade's challenges and opportunities, and has a great track record of working effectively with our state agencies, the legislature, and the governor's office. This is more than just lobbying, it's about securing access. Access to funding opportunities, policy discussions, and legislative developments that directly impact our community. Whether it's identifying relevant grant programs, monitoring legislation, or helping our city's officials navigate meetings with key state leaders, these services are critical to making sure Fort Meade has a seat at the table. This agreement is structured with accountability in mind, a one-year term with two optional one-year renewals, annual budgeting limited limits, preapproval for out-of-pocket expenses, and a thirty-day termination clause. It also ensures compliance with all relevant ethics and conflict of interest standards, giving us assurance of transparency and integrity in representation. The sixty thousand dollar cost has already been budgeted under professional services for the current fiscal year. Given the increase in competition among municipalities for state resources, I believe this is a smart and strategic investment in Fort Meade's future. I respectfully recommend the commission approve this agreement as presented. Are there any questions?
We ever had this group before?
Griffin Group was the lobbyist, uh, this past fiscal year, and, um, did a, did a great job.
What did they do? I mean, I understand what their job is, but how did they help Fort Meade?
We received a, uh, actually a one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar appropriation for one of our projects. So that was, uh, I feel, and it was value-added for what we, for our investment.
Thank you.
We've been able to get appropriations before without having to lobby. And, uh, right now is a critical time on the budget. And we'll have to just think about it, talk about it, and then if we need it, we need it. But I know we need to consider it. Or have.
Yeah.
Well, go ahead, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Yeah, we were able to get appropriations previously, and I think it's due because we had representation in Tallahassee from Fort Meade, who also understood our needs, in that of Representative Melanie Bell, who is no longer there. Although we do have representation from Hope County, um, she was an extra voice there because she was from Fort Meade, and I think this lobbying group did an excellent job, uh, considering the timeframe that they came in. They came in kinda like nearing the end of appropriation season and was still able to secure a hundred and seventy-five dollars, which proved to be, um, very helpful in our goals. And I think, given the fact that right now we do have still more goals that we want to accomplish, that, um, adding them, keeping them on, uh, is key.
Hundred seventy-five thousand, right?
Yes. Say it again?
Say a hundred seventy-five dollars, sorry.
Oh, a hundred seventy-five thousand, I apologize. Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. Is there anyone in front of the public that'd like to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve, oh.
Okay. I don't know what's going on out there.
Yeah.
That's a generator, but I just, that's what he stepped down on, I asked him why they tested the generator at this time.
I can try to turn it up a little bit.
Hopefully it's not.
Yeah.
Sometimes when they test generators.
We'll try to use our outside voices.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agreement between the City of Fort Meade and the Griffin Group for State Governmental Relations Consulting and Lobbying Services for one-year term with the option for two additional one-year renewals at a cost not to exceed sixty thousand dollars annually, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Madam, uh, attorney's here.
If we don't have a second, it fails.
Is it appropriate that I provide a second?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I'll provide a second. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign.
Aye.
So.
The motion fails.
Motion fails. Moving on to item E zero-two.
Resolution number twenty-two five dash ninety-two, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Meade, Florida, approving the execution and administration of the Community Redevelopment Block Grant, Coronavirus CDBG-CV Contract Number Twenty-two CV-S one-eight, providing grant funding to support the Kids' Pack Feeding Program in Fort Meade, providing for authorization, implementation, and an effective date.
Is the external door locked?
The external door is not locked now.
Okay.
Uh, we have it cracked, and we're working on the sound here at the Fire Department. Chief says we're gonna contact the captain.
Kate Spat, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, and you'll recall, this was brought before the commission, um, in June, and we're bringing this back, um, to add a portion of the language. Um, the city has been awarded a grant to address food insecurity heightened by COVID-nineteen, and these funds will allow us to expand Kids' Pack, which partners with local schools and the Boys and Girls Club to provide consistent access to food for students and families in need. As you know, Fort Meade is classified as a food desert by the USDA, and both of our schools are Title One, serving many low-income families. This program will directly support our most vulnerable residents. The scope of services will include weekend packed meals for the students at Lewis Anwood Berry Elementary. They will stock Fort Meade's middle school with shelf-stable food and hygiene items. They'll distribute forty weekly family meals in packages through the Boys and Girls Club, and, and they'll upgrade the food storage and purchase of a reach truck to handle increased capacity. Uh, what's been added is compliance, um, and eligibility will be tracked by student I.D. Um, and we will maintain, you know, dedicated funding for Fort Meade, um, that will follow federal and CDBG compliance procedures. There is no fiscal impact. Uh, this is all covered by grant funding, and this initiative is meaningful, a meaningful step in addressing hunger and supporting student success in Fort Meade. Staff recommends approval of the execution and administration of the CDBG-CV Contract Twenty-two CV-S eighteen in support of Kids' Pack and authorization for the mayor to execute the agreement.
Questions?
What? Uh, in the background, under the twenty percent residents live in property, and thirty-three percent live more than ten miles from a grocery store. Do we have that, do we meet that requirement?
Um, we, we meet that requirement, we have a, a grocery mart is what is located in Fort Meade, um.
That's not considered a grocery store?
It's considered a grocery mart by the USDA.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't know, ask.
Yes.
I'm just worried about being non-qualified. It's a good, it's a good program. It's a good program, right, program, but I want to make sure we qualify before we go here.
Yes. What qualifies us is the fact that we're de, we're deemed a food desert.
Well, I, I know that, but we also have thirty, the twenty percent property, I knew we'd be that. The thirty-three percent are ten miles from a grocery store. But most of our students are not gonna live ten miles away from a grocery store if this is considered a grocery store. That's my one question. If it was considered a grocery store.
Gotcha.
And it's, so it's not, it's a considered grocery mart. I never knew that as a classification difference.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have none.
Anyone from the community care to, to comment on this issue? No, we'll, uh, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution R two zero two-five dash nine-two Kids' Pack Feeding Program.
Okay. So we have a motion and a proper second. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign. None, motion carries. Item E three. City Manager search discussion.
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. As you know, uh, Dr. Trejo, uh, the gentleman that you selected to perform the City Manager search, he is unable to physically perform, um, and, and, uh, carry out the, uh, you know, carry out the search for you. And so I sent an email to you, let you know that, and I wanted to make sure we keep this moving forward. And I said to executive search firms, you already have one, uh, I think it was, uh, SGR, and they sent a proposal in. We have Colin Benzinger and Bob Slaven with Slaven Management Associates, and, uh, Marnice Miller and Associates, they submitted and I've forwarded, uh, so you should have like four to look at. I also contacted FCCNA, which I still, I think that they would do a good job for you. And they're inexpensive because you only pay for certain things. They, they have access to the pool of candidates that the companies would look at, and there was a concern about, uh, staffing, you know, level of effort. You know, what would be the City of Fort Meade's level effort to do this? Those firms, the private companies, they do it all, you know, they advertise, they, you don't do anything. You just, they give you updates, and candidates come in, you interview them, and they negotiate the contract and all that. So that's why the cost is anywhere from, with Dr. Trejo, his cost was, was fifteen thousand dollars. Okay, that's what, how much he was gonna charge to your search, and you can see they go up to thirty-six thousand. Could be more, depending on how elaborate you get. Um, so I wanted to make sure that we keep this going and that you guys are aware, and wanna have a discussion with the council about what, what you wanna do, because, you know, I think I know what you should do, and I'm hoping to keep this thing moving, so.
Well, the S C C, I mean, I, I concern about the staffing, uh, initiative. Did they decline to be, agree to do it, or?
No, no, FCCMA is a non-for-profit organization that will help you do this. This is a, this is a.
Right, so they're in the pool also?
Well, they're in the pool, but not in the pool. They're not private comp, they're not a private company, they provide full service. They only, they only do certain things. Um, and so I think their proposal, or their, their recommendation was that they would do as much as you needed, and then they would have to, you'd have to augment their support with staff. And I think the staff had a concern that, hey, can they deliver and, and keep up, you know, to the level that they might need to be and, uh, to do it? We only have one person in charge, and that person's covered up. And, um, and I can't speak for her, she can speak directly to y'all, tell you what she goes through on a daily basis. But, you know, I think you should look at any and all and, uh, kinda talk about what you wanna do.
Well, we need to go forward, however we gotta do it, we need to do it.
Yeah.
So I was pleased with, uh, FCCMA and the services they rendered, uh, prior to.
I, I was too. So, uh.
Well, my only concern with that is, uh, being that we're obviously not gonna spend sixty thousand dollars for a Griffin lobby group, it looks like it frees up some funds in order to hire a search for, firm to conduct this search for us. Um, our staff, although our staff is well-capable, it's the time in which we need this search thoroughly conducted and returned with results. So that is the issue in regarding to our current staff. She is a one-woman show, and she also is already for, fulfilling a dual role. She is not only human resources, but she is risk management. And then to add and pile on the responsibility of doing a third role, deep dive into a possible individual who would take the helm of running this city, I just think that's asking a lot of one person. When these firms, they are getting paid to render a deep dive, a thorough search, including background checks, and including marketing, including interviewing, and including preparing questions for this commission to ask of those who we are potentially considering to take on the responsibility of being our city manager, I feel as though it would be best practice that we use some money to pay a search for, firm to locate individuals who are willing to be interviewed and potentially, um, take over as the city manager full-time here. Um, I think that's a good use of funds, uh, being that we only have a few months to get that done. Uh, I think that would be the best course of action. And I liked, uh, I don't have the list, excuse me again, Mr. Brown. Would you read off those firms to me again? I know it was SGR.
SGR.
And you sent over.
I sent over Colin Benzinger.
Benzinger, yes.
I sent over Slaven Management and Associates, and, uh, Marnice Miller's, a local, a local, uh, H R firm.
Okay, I like the one that was a little bit over sixteen thousand dollars. She, I think they provided in-depth, uh, search, um, provided just about equally as much of the services that some of the larger firms would provide, um, in a great timeframe. Uh, I think the timeframe for her was any up to ninety days. Um, I think that's, uh, given the timeframe that we're in, we're pressed for time right now, um, I think that's a great investment.
What were the last two names again?
Um, it was, um, just go to my email here, just so that I can remember.
I think it was Slaven.
Yeah, it, it was Slaven, like, there's, it was Slaven Management Consultants, but let me, let me just make sure that I know what I'm talking about.
The last one? Is that the question, the last?
The last two. I don't think it was the, what, uh, what Commissioner McCutcheon is saying is not the last one. That was Slaven Management and Associates. The last one.
Big C, I see.
Was, uh, yes. Yes.
Human Capital Resources and Concepts.
Yes.
Capital Resources?
Yeah.
Human Capital Resources and Concepts. That's what you spoke of.
Didn't you say somebody was local?
Yes, that was Capital Resources. Um, uh, Human Capital Resources and Concepts. They're out of Winter Haven. Right. Last email. And they would, they would provide full service, full service. I mean, for, they have it broken down on one of their pages, um, senior level or executive roles.
Yes.
They have an hourly rate and/or they have a lump sum flat fee. So, but it's anywhere from thirty-five to seventy-five, so.
It wasn't down.
No, I was gonna say.
They might, I mean, they might negotiate with you, you know, if you wanna use somebody local, uh, you can. Um, Slaven Management came in at sixteen, but they, there are other things that you have to do, you know, that she might not. I think their travel is like, they won't charge you more than three thousand dollars, so it's really like nineteen, so. But you gotta look at all the other things. But all of them appear to be qualified.
Yes.
And I want to make sure you guys are aware of it.
Yes, yes. Well, I, I personally was leaning towards Slaven. I like the package that you presented to us, the services that they are offering to provide for the amount that is affordable. Uh, and at the end of the day, it will render the results that we are looking for. Um, her package was similar to those of the larger firms, in my opinion. Um, and I, I, I believe they have the competency to do the job if they are selected, um, to do the job. But I was pleased with what they presented.
I mean, they're, they are, everybody that's in it is qualified, in my opinion.
Indeed.
Any further discussion and or comments?
How much was Slaven? How much was Slaven? Mr. Brown?
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor, just give me a minute, I was, I wasn't prepared to go into details about either. I just wanna have a conversation with you, but, but just give me thirty seconds, you know, I'm gonna look and, uh.
I'm gonna look and. Okay. So Slavens, Slavens professional fees on page thirteen and. They start out at, at sixteen, sixteen five nine five.
Do you have any additional?
They have, they have additional fees, additional expenses, about two thousand dollars for travel. And, and then they have some other things that if you, if you want them to do it.
Right.
They would charge more, but, but their standard is sixteen nine five plus travel, two thousand dollars plus. Let me have that based, and I'll just go to down the line here, that was Slaven, okay? And the, I'm going to go to Benzinger's. I think you already had SGR, you know, they're at thirty, at thirty-six or something like that.
At thirty, it does, SRG, is that plus travel?
It's probably all in, I didn't, I didn't, I knew you guys already got it.
Yeah, we had that already.
And I, I didn't know if you wanted me to do that or not, but I'm happy to do it, if you want me to do it, the deep dive. I'm just trying to go to his fee schedule here. Nineteen, page nineteen. Page nineteen thirty-two, five hundred, near, it's fixed fee, so it's whichever day. And, and FCCMA, you know, they, they don't charge, they only charge you.
Backgrounds and stuff like that.
Yeah, and, and now that can, that's something that if you want to piece it out like that, you can. There might be some delay because, you know, you're dealing with staff. And not that this is not a priority, there are many priorities in the city.
Do you have a, an estimate on what it costs with FMCA?
No, I don't, but it's, it's, all I know is cheaper than everybody else, okay? But you don't get, you, you don't get the full suite of, of the recruitment or the search. What you get is, you know, someone that knows, they know all the players and they can navigate and do this process. But it's going to require our staff to be involved. She had one person, who's wearing three hats, sometimes four.
Yes, exactly.
Well, she wouldn't have time to be there then, I mean, she's already, she's married like that, there's no use in putting anything else on.
Well, you know, you know how it is, you know, it's like a workload, you know, you can't do ten things good or great. Maybe do one or two things really good, but if you have too many balls up in the air.
Right.
You make, you make, you make people's, the small, because the chicken little becomes the chicken big, and so.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
No, I, I don't have anything else.
Anyone from the community would like to speak?
Oh, wow, I'm ready.
Yeah, it doesn't work, it's the hand held.
Don't worry, it's, I'm loud. Good evening, Chamber Island, four twenty-five South French Avenue, Fort Meade Quarter. Commissioner McCutcheon, I one hundred percent agree with you. I'm not sure why we didn't go back to the lobby, so do you need money? So I don't know why that wasn't considered, but I think we need to also remember, you have to spend money to get money. And if we're talking about hiring a firm to help seek the next city manager, we don't need to go cheap round. So I don't know what some of your thoughts are on this, but I would act as you would think it. I'm not saying obviously to go with the thirty thousand dollar one. I mean, I don't know, I haven't been here for the budget yet, so I'm not sure what the budget looks like. But I do ask that you be very considerate and not go cheap round just because, you know, there may not be any money or whatever the case is, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak?
Candace Law, three twenty-four South Locks, Miami. I was just wanting.
The other microphone, yes.
I was just wanting to remind, I mean, I know all probably remember, but when we were doing the budget earlier today, I believe that Mrs. Smith had said that she allotted an extra five thousand for professional services in the city, under the city manager fund, just for background checks and stuff, and if you're not using that because of the FCCMA and you go with an F, that's five thousand that you could add to that to, to find somebody and take the burden off, you know what I mean?
Understood, understood.
Just reminding you that it's theirs.
Yeah, thank you. That's a lot for the ones that she does do.
Through the city.
Yeah, okay. All right.
If no further discussion, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we direct city staff or city, city manager to, to enter negotiations with Slaven for the city manager's search.
One second, ma'am. So we have a motion and a proper second to enter into a contract, into, into negotiation for the executive search with Slaven Company. That is, it's Robert Slaven. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? None, motion carries. Moving on to item four. Republic Services price increase, Assistant City Manager Wheeler.
On July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, the city received formal notification of Republic Services of an eight point nine percent rate increase effective October first. This adjustment would raise the city's cost per residential account from twenty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents to thirty dollars and three cents per month. It's important to note that the city currently bills residents thirty dollars and sixty-one cents per month. So the new cost would leave a very narrow margin, approximately fifty-eight cents per account. Budgetary impact is that the increase represents a direct eight point nine percent rise in the city's solid waste service cost. While this amount is budgeted under our current solid waste allocation, the shrinking margin raises the need to consider future adjustments, particularly if similar increases occur annually. Staff is recommending approval of this rate increase as proposed by Republic Services. Additionally, staff is requesting commission direction to begin a discussion on whether the city should pass this cost increase on to residents in whole or in part. We believe it is prudent to begin those conversations now, both to plan ahead for future budgeting and to ensure that any adjustment in the residential rate, if needed, is implemented with transparency and adequate notice. The rate increase letter from Republic Services is attached for your reference. It outlines the justification for the increase, including cost pressures related to labor, fuel, and operational expenses. The proposed motion before you tonight is to approve the Republic Services rate increase effective October first, twenty twenty-five, and direct staff to address the pass-through rate for residents. Anyone have any questions?
I do, and I'm not sure if Trevor is up to speed on this. But it's regarding when we adjusted rates, and I believe I asked this before, is it now an appropriate time to look at adjusting the rates that we're charging our residents? Because if I'm not mistaken, there is a margin of profit that might be built into a schedule just so we can stay on track with what we're bringing in for repairs or something along those lines. Does that sound familiar?
Yeah, what you're talking about is the rate case. And so what they do is, when, when they, when they're determining what their rate structure is, profit is built into that. But I don't think that's what we're recommending, and that's not what we're doing here. What we, this proposal is.
If we should pass that.
If we should pass this increase on to, because we've got to pay it, because we're under a contract with them.
However, if we don't, that profit margin is only fifty cent now at this point.
We'll have to, we'll have to dig into it and see, I mean, I don't know.
Approaching to what I just understood. It'll be fifty cent. So fifty cent will not meet that parameter of staying on track so that we could, we will have the funds for repairs and for upgrading our system.
Oh, I see, yeah, so like, we, we, we discussed some of this today at the budget workshop about having a contingency to, for unplanned or unforeseen services. And so, you know, obviously, you know, you know, if we run like a business, we would pass this cost on to residents, we just would. And it's to your discretion if you want to do that or not. You know, our recommendation is that you discuss it among yourself. If you, if you're asking staff a recommendation, I'm just going to tell you point blank, I recommend that you pass this on to rate payers, these are people that pay utility bills. And it's, because it's a cost that you have, that you, you're, you're bearing. We don't have anything in the budget to make the move, so.
Commissioner Scowl, any thoughts?
I just don't want towards the city of Fort Meade residents anymore money what we're charging. Now, I understand with, with the increase, but I don't want increases anymore than what you're saying.
Okay, so, so, so what we've done, we've handicapped ourselves by not going after federal dollars, right? And these, as I just pointed out, fifty cent to go towards repairs, fifty cent per account, not just fifty cent alone, is definitely not going to be enough that we stay on track. This isn't something that, this is what our accountant. I call him B because he has a difficult name, but, but Johnson, you know, he came here, him, he came here and he explained this to, to us in detail, why we have what we have. And it's for us to stay on track, to be able to continue to flow. If we do not function as a business, then we're only setting ourselves up for failure. And so we, at some point, we're either going to function as a business or we're not. Or the city of Fort Meade will be here to take care of the residents? Is that the direction and is that the, the theme that I'm hearing? Because, and, you know, I'm only one of five, so we make the vote, we're moving. We're gonna have to suffer the consequences of our decisions.
So what do you think, prepare rate?
Well, if we're going to function as a business, we're going to have to do one thing, either increase what we pay, charge them, or pass this cost off to the residents. But to just eat it, it's gonna bring harm to the city.
I'm not suggesting you eat it.
So, so what are you suggesting?
I said I don't want to see them pay any more than what it is, they, they, it's not much even if it buys it.
I understand that, so that means either they're going to pay it or we're going to charge them a higher rate. So that means they will pay.
How much would it be?
We don't know, that's not where we are in the discussion. This particular item is about whether or not we're going to pass this over. But we, we heard your point, Commissioner McCutcheon, your thoughts on this matter?
My thoughts are, are just simple. It, it's, it's not rocket science. It's, just like everything else, it's the cost of living. It's the cost of living. I, I would love to be able to absorb the increases, but that's just not where we are here at the city of Fort Meade. We're not there yet. So in order to operate like a business, car insurance went up, utility rates go up, health insurance goes up, I kick and scream, but you better believe, when the bill is due, I'm paying. Cell phone bill goes up, everything goes up. It's not a fun place to be during this time of the year. But we knew this was coming, well, I'll say me. We knew this was coming, the handwriting was on the wall. So my suggestion is, yes, we have to pass the cost on to the residents. It's not fun, but it's necessary. It's necessary, I wish there was another player in this game outside of Republic Services, but there isn't. I, I just wish there were, someone else that we could bid with. There's a bidding war for our services here in Fort Meade, but nobody's beating down the door. So here lies why Republic Services can continue to increase their rate with the city of Fort Meade, because we need them. They really don't need us, but we need them. And so it's the cost of doing business, and I'm not trying to be callous or insensitive or compassionate toward any person in the city of Fort Meade, any resident, but you have to remember, I pay too. I don't get a pass. So my decision is based upon what we have in front of us. And unfortunately, we at the city of Fort Meade are not in a position to continue to absorb costs when things go up. We, we don't have it. We don't have it. I wish we did, but we don't.
Anything?
I think it's fair. Question, does anybody know a break or how many times Republic has asked for price increase?
No, I don't, but we, we can research.
Find out if I don't miss anything. And this is, they're entitled to my contract. So I have no problem with that. Question is, basically, do we pass it on now? Do we kick it down the road, pass it on later? After the, things get better in our economy, in our budget, or we just eat it right now? Now, there's some things we're going to have to eat later on, and I think this would be one of the, the more economic ones to pass on to the customer, to the passer. Look at two fifty, two dollars and fifty-three cents or something of that nature, a month. And I'm sure we're going to find other things that will be cut.
Anyone, anyone from the community care to speak on this item? If not, then, yes.
I'm Steve Robey, eighteen ten, Bagley South, in the Henry Lake. Unfortunately, we couldn't hear most of what you got to tell everybody about this, but you're. Republic has a contract with the city.
Yes.
The city has a contract with Republic, they dictate what they charge you, and you have to pass it on to us. We're concerned out there, at how it's going to be assessed, per resident, I guess you'd say. In a situation like we got, and maybe others. In a situation like we've got and maybe others in this area, where there may be eighty sites out there, at least half of them are homeless. So they're not here half a year taking advantage of these services. So one of our concerns is how it's going to be assessed. That's a commercial account, I assume, that they set up through the city. I suppose they'd like for you to give some consideration on how that works, mostly on retired people living out there. And I just want to make sure that you say that sort of thing. When it comes time to assess, we're led us down the road. That's all we have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I was going to say, we could, we could do bill inserts. We can show what the increase would look like on a bill. I mean, that's, that's an excellent, you know, way of, if it's, you know, if it's eight point nine percent, you know, let's say that could be eighty cent, could be whatever. So we, you know, looking at what it would look like. Because I know eight point nine percent looks like a big number, but when it's eight point nine percent of a million dollars, it's different. Eight point nine percent, ten dollars. So we definitely need to have a communication plan. I think it's bill inserts and showing people what's going, what their, what their unit price would go to. So that they could see kind of like, okay, I see what it is, you know. But it would be uniform across the board. We wouldn't, we would not have different prices for different people.
Correct. And so that's, that was the question in my head. Because it's a mobile home park, is that a different pay rate?
I think it depends on the contract that we have in place with Republic, because they may, they may look at that as being like a commercial account. They might have their own way of how they bill. I don't know that. I mean, I'd have to get back with you on that. But they, you know, depends on how your contract is structured, how they, how they charge for, charge people for those services.
Got you. Would, would either of them know how it works?
Now, Trevor's new, but he's been here before, so.
No, sorry, I didn't answer my question. He spoke of being in a mobile home park.
Right.
Is that being billed at a different rate than a house or a park?
Yeah, so, so we got that edge, okay, with Commissioner Watts, but we don't have your energy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Trevor.
No, okay, so someone should-
We'll reach out to him, and we'll get his information so we can- We'll get your purchase intention, if you don't mind, and we'll, you know, circle back with you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Republic Services rate increase effective October one, 2025, and direct staff to address the pass-through rate for the residents.
We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the rate, rate increase and pass it on to the residents. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay.
Or address the issue, the passage.
Okay, so, would you repeat what the motion was, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Republic Services rate increase effective October one, 2025, and to direct staff, and, and direct staff to pass the rate through to the residents.
Okay, that is the motion. Do we have a second?
Motion was addressed the issue, addressed the pass-through, but, uh, so far so good.
So we have the motion. Are you still on for the second?
Yeah, I'm still second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item five, Agent Director Gloria Nelson.
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Just in case your bellies aren't quite yet full enough with unavoidable increases, I bring to you this evening an increase to the health insurance premiums for the 2025-2026 Plan Year. The city's annual open enrollment for employee benefits began on August first, 2025. The new plan will begin on October first, 2025. When health insurance premiums increase, commission approval is required as the change directly impacts the adopted budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. Premium rates are established by Public Risk Management, or PRM, who's the administrator for all of the city's health insurance coverage. For the 2025-2026 Plan Year, health insurance premiums have increased eleven point five percent. Staff has reviewed the fiscal impact of the city fully absorbing this increase for all current plan participants. The attached materials have been updated to reflect staff's recommendation. However, I've also provided you for consideration an alternative scenario, which includes an opportunity for you to apply a one percent, two percent, or three percent premium increase to employees. The premium increase, if the commission chooses to absorb the, the increase, will result in an additional cost of approximately five thousand four hundred and three dollars and sixty-seven cents per month, on top of what we pay on the employer's side for benefits. Or that's sixty-four thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars and four cents a month annually, solely based on the current plan participation levels. Staff is recommending that you, the commission, ratify the 2025-2026 health insurance premiums as set by PRM, and approve the city's absorption of the eleven point five percent increase for all current plan participants. Attack, I provided to you two attachments. The first attachment, which is entitled Current Coffin or City of Fort Mead Medical Plans, provides you a vantage point of what our current premiums look like, what we pay in total, what the employer's contribution is, and what the employees' contribution is, and what percentages are represented by those contributions. Also, in that spreadsheet, you'll find the new 2025-2026 premiums, and what it would look like if there was no increase to employees, i.e. the city absorbs the increase. The second spreadsheet that I provided details for you those opportunities to push forward the one percent, two percent, or three percent increases to employees. I have to add that we have, we, we're going to need to take some action. We're late in the game, and we'll need to have a decision made quickly, tonight if possible, because we are less than ten days away from the closing of this open enrollment, and employees need to be told what their new premiums are going to be. If we take no action, there will be increased premiums that will be most detrimental for employees who have opted for plans that include their families and spouses.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nelson. Thank you for very thorough spreadsheets that you have given us here. The one question that I do have, Mr. Brown, is in our budget hearings, there was no discussion of employee raises. Are there any on the books?
And that, that's why we are still having these discussions in town, because of what we're finding, what we need to be discussing, and so, you know, everything's on the table.
Okay, all right. I, I'll put it this way, I've been here before, personally. To where you, we think we're getting a raise only for the insurance to go up.
Absolutely.
So my thought is this, I definitely don't, don't believe, just from hearing through the budget hearings, again, we're in a position to absorb the full grant of the health insurance plan increase, the sixty-four thousand eight forty-four. But I, I, I am compassionate enough to where I am willing to do the monthly premium with at least a two percent increase for the employee. And that's just hoping, some way, shape, or form, that if employees receive at least a cost of living raise, maybe not a merit increase, that that would buffer the rate increase for their health insurance, to where they won't see a significant decrease in what they are bringing home on a biweekly basis. I don't know how that all plays out, because again, we're writing a new long budget. So it would be nice to kind of know what numbers we're crunching, what we're working with, and what we know we can and cannot do. But I understand where we are in regards to having to make a decision tonight, because we don't have time.
Yeah, I'll have to scram, I'll have to scramble when you make your decision. I'll have to scramble to get the materials out to employees and get the changes into the system before August thirty-first.
That's my thoughts.
Any further discussion?
Well, I do remember when I was employed, I'd get a raise and insurance to go up. I'm in favor of helping the, helping employees out. I don't have anything else.
I personally have been involved in that, especially in work for governments. And I don't foresee how we're going to get much of a raise if any, at this moment in time. Because if we'd had this earlier, possibly if we'd known about it earlier, we could adjust the circuit, worked at law raise, talked further into budget issue, about what might be covered. By now, I don't think they're going to get much of it. And I'm prepared to vote to a eight, it's over, Val.
Anyone from the public care to speak on this issue? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the 2025-26 health insurance premium rates and authorize the city- Okay, hold on. Okay, I'm moving to approve the 2025-26 health insurance premium rates as presented, and direct staff to increase the employee portion two percent. And the city absorbs, is that eight and a half percent, for the current plan participants. Is that the right math?
Nine point five percent.
Nine point five? Oh, you're right, nine point five. Nine point, point five percent for the current plan participants.
We have a proper motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Second? So we have a motion and a second to approve, as stated in the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item E zero six, Coastal and Heartland National Extrary Partnership Policy Committee Discussion.
Commissioners, this was a, I'm just going to pull something, excuse me, correspondence that we received that indicates that we just have to designate someone on the committee, on the board that would be up to the commission.
Yeah, I speak of, because I can barely hear you right across the room.
I'm sorry.
We, we need to appoint one to this board.
Yeah.
Okay, so this board is a board that's been in place for quite some time, and I, I guess they must have had a representative on this board, some board previously. If not, this would be a new one. Is everyone interested in the environment and extrary science? So be that board.
Wow.
Any discussion?
I already served a couple of half years in the circle of boards. I don't need another one.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I'll, I'll go if I have to go by myself.
Okay.
I, I, I'll learn. I'll be educated.
Need a motion to that back, then we can-
All right.
Before you do the motion, we also need an alternate.
Oh, you also need an alternate?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll be the alternate. I volunteer to be the alternate.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Commissioner McCutcheon as the Heartland Extrary Partnerships Policy Committee Representative, and Mayor Barry as the overall.
Second?
So we have a motion and a second, as stated, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? None, motion carries. And with that, our next, any comments?
We will not have another special meeting. We'll wait until September ninth for a regular meeting, and that's our next meeting will be, unless, unless an emergency occurs. Notified, okay.
City Attorney, any comments?
No, sir.
Commissioner Skow, Vice Mayor Skow, any comments?
No, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
I have none.
None.
All right, with that being said, our next meeting will be held, our regular commission meeting, September ninth, six P M, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So would you, second?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Thank you guys for coming. Have a good night.